Welcome to the February 14, 2022 Curriculum Evaluation Committee Meeting. It is 6:04 PM and we are in the Nashua North Boardroom. First, I'm going to take the role. We have Ms. Lamphier.
Here.
We have Mr. Claffey.
Here.
And Mr. Claffey is joining us by phone. Do any of the committee members have a problem?
No.
Okay, excellent. And Jessica Brown, I am here. We have a quorum. Also in attendance, we have Ms. Paula Johnson from the Board of Education. We have Mr. Miller from the Nashville School District, Mr. Parker, and Dr. Sarfati from the District Office. So first, we have a presentation regarding the Ledg Street Elementary School from Mr. Miller.
Thank you. I actually saw this great quote. I just have to say this and share this with you all. Whatever you're doing today, do it with the confidence of a four-year-old in a Batman T-shirt. So I've been living today like that. So thank you for having me here. This has become an annual thing with Ledg being a school of its comprehensive school improvement. So each year, we get funds from the state. So we just received our funds probably about a month or two ago. And so what I do is when I have those funds, I write a grant up, have to do research justification with it, send it up to the Department of Education. They review it. If they have any changes, they'll let me know, but they'll approve it, send it back down. And then I'm able to put the contract in for the district here. So even though it's not our school district's funds, it's from the state, it still goes by the Board policies here. So I figured the easiest way to do it for the sake of efficiency would be for me to just talk a little bit about each of the contracts, and then if you all have questions, feel free to ask. So the first contract we have is, and both of these are continuing work that we've been doing for probably about the last two years or so. And so the first one is with the Burke Group, and it's out of Olympia, Washington. And I worked with them when I was a principal in Washington back several years ago. And it's focusing on aligning our Tier One instruction with brain research, with the latest brain research, and really aligning it with how the brain learns. And so it's been really incredible work. It's based on these kind of four pillars of how a brain learns and receives information, which is it wants to survive, it wants to know why, it wants to build pathways, and it wants to know the bigger picture. And so what they've done is they've created a rubric of Tier One instructional habits, is what they call it, powerful teaching and learning that's based on those four things that the brain wants to learn. So it's pretty fascinating work. So we're in the middle of implementing all of that, which is great. So that's one of the contracts. And the second contract is with Ramapo for Children, and they're out of New York. And I actually got their name about a year and a half ago from Demonstrated Success, who was one of the partners that we work with. They've had a really good experience with them, and they've turned out to be everything they've said it and said it to be and more. So we've got two PD streams going along with them. The first one is, you know, Ledg is a school of opportunity. It's highly diverse. It's just a wonderful school. For us as adults, we need to do a lot of self-reflecting as educators so that, I don't know if any of you are photography buffs, but we need to widen our aperture. We need to make sure our lens is very wide when we see, excuse me, the children sitting in our school. And so they're helping us self-reflect on that. And really, I think the work comes down to self-reflecting on how we see the world. Because it's not as much about learning about the kids who are in our school, but it's how we show up for the students in our school. So if my lens is only from the way I grew up or the way I see the world, then it's this big. But I need to think about, you know, students who, you know, celebrate a different religion or come from a different country or speak a different language or have an semblance of trauma that I might never have had. And so there are different exercises we've gone through as a staff to widen our lens so that we can really support kids in the way they need to be supported. And then the second stream is really exciting. I'm looking forward to it. It's something that's actually going to be new to me as well as an administrator. But we're going to be working with them on a youth voice program. And when, a lot of times when people think youth voice in elementary, they think, you know, do they get voice in the new play equipment we're going to get? Or do they want pizza or chicken sandwiches on Friday, right? Which aren't bad for elementary, you know, and it's kind of a fun conversation. But we really want to dive deep. And I want them to dive deep into having voice and choice with our school improvement plan goals. I want them to look at our data. I want them to be invested and feel a sense, a true sense of belonging within what they're doing and living within for eight hours of their day. And so Ramapo is going to help us with this structure. And in particular, there's a difference between hearing kids and listening to understand kids. And I want to really build systems and structures where we really listen to understand students. And so there'll be groups of students, it'll probably start with fourth and fifth grade, that actually will meet with our building leadership team, that will meet with our social-emotional learning team, and really have that vested interest in there. And the second little piece to that is that as adults, we need to learn, and this is myself included, how we receive that information from the students. And how much are we showing up to receive that information? I think there's a sense of skill that needs to go with that. If we're going to invite them into a conversation about our school improvement plan goals, how are we doing that and how are we receiving that as an adult so that we can respond in a way that helps them to become even more vulnerable and show more sense of belonging within? And that will keep the conversation going. So that's kind of an overview of the two contracts that we have out there, and hopefully will go through the remainder of this year and then a little bit into next year until the new funds come out. But that was 30,000 foot. So if there's any kind of questions, I figured I'd open it up to the group.
Any questions?
I was actually wondering, where in the process are you? Like, the, I think it's the Ramapo, said that there was three years, and I didn't know, is this the second year now that we're in? And how do you see the progress going?
Oh, that's, actually, that's a great question. That's with the Burke, the Burke work. And you're right, it's, excuse me, as Dwayne says, who is the president of Burke and works with us, he works himself out of a job within like three or four years, which is the best because these CSI funds are going to end. And what I want to do is make sure we have PD that, you know, teaches us to fish, right? So yes, so we are working through a process of change. And it was a process of change that was new to me when I first saw it in Washington when I worked with the Burke Group. But we move through a common awareness, to a common understanding, to a common language, to a common practice, those four things, right? I think a lot of times what happens is schools will jump from, they see an issue, they see a problem, they see something in the data, they see something in behavior, and boom, they put in the practice. And what's, the problem with that is there's no driver to that engine. There's no culture behind the buy-in. There's no why. And that's what drives the sustainability of whatever that program is. And so we've really taken it step by step with Burke. So two years ago, when we brought Burke in, we had the staff talk about the common awareness of, you know, why are we even addressing Tier One instruction? Well, we're addressing Tier One instruction because that's the foundation of everything else. Everything we submit to interventionists, everything we do with special ed is based on that instruction. So we talked about that kind of rationale and put it a little bit into some of the Burke language, but really just talked about that rationale of Tier One. And that makes sense to address the base of instruction first. Then after that, a little bit after that, so this was probably two years ago, probably six or eight months after that, we started talking about a common understanding of, you know, this is the deeper reason why we're using Burke, because Burke is going to align our instruction with the brain research that's there and how a brain learns, which makes perfect sense, right? And there are fascinating things about the brain that we've learned over the past 10 years. So then we started, and so the common awareness and common understanding we've been working on for about, probably the last year and a half. And then this year, we've been working on the common language, which has been phenomenal. So now we're really taking a look at the rubric that we've got and really matching that so that as we talk in professional learning communities with teachers, this year, for instance, you could say to any teacher in the building, you know, tell me about your ready-to-learn skills. And those teachers would be able to talk about their social-emotional learning, because we know that ready-to-learn skills need to be there first, because stressed brains don't learn well, so they need to be ready to learn. So we're talking about all those things, or talk-to-learn skills. Our teachers know about talk-to-learn skills, and when they talk in PLCs, they talk about turn and discuss. And so these, this common language has now been kind of inputted into all our systems and structures. And now, moving forward, this is, this is kind of like COVID stretched it out a little bit, but this is kind of considered our third-ish year coming in now. So now, we're really putting the practice into place. And it's really great because I think teachers have really bought into it. It's practices, they already, some of them, they already know, like teachers know turn and discuss, but it's the frequency that you do it. It's the nuances to the way you do it that'll match with how the brain learns. So we're really focusing on putting that into place. And this is the year we've begun learning walks. So a learning walk is different than a walkthrough. A learning walk is where we're not looking with Burke at the what we teach. We're not looking at curriculum, we're not looking at programs, we're looking at the how we teach, okay? And how can be universal. It's universal from high school to middle school to wherever, to elementary. So we actually go to different levels. So for instance, shout out to the great people over at South and the great teachers and admin over there. I had my building leadership team go to Nashville High School South. And they went with Dwayne, and they have a rubric that they go by to look at the powerful teaching and learning. But they, and they went through classrooms, but they're not looking at that teacher or what they're doing or the curriculum they're teaching. They're just looking at what instruction is being presented. And then they self-reflect, because you have to look at instruction to really self-reflect on your own, and then all of a sudden, they self-reflect on through the rubric, okay, this is what I can do to have things show up more in my classroom. So it's this great self-reflection process, which is really the, kind of the third-year-ish thing where teachers really start embedding that in. But it takes, to circle back, after all, I kind of vomited all that at you, from the common awareness to common understanding and common language and common practice, that's what we've been stretched out to do. And that's where the sustainability will be, so it won't be person-dependent, it'll be teachers have got it inside of them, their hearts and their teaching souls there.
Is it, is it just for Ledg Street right now? Is it any chance it can be expanded into the other schools now that the teachers are trained as facilitators? Or will it just be for Ledg Street for this, for the next, for the foreseeable future?
Wow, that's a great question. I know, I know we're using our CSI funds to do it. It's expensive work, but it's hugely valuable and it changes the face of the school. I know when I was back in Washington, it changed it. And the other, the other key that I forgot to mention real quick was that it's one of the few ways to look at Tier One instruction that can actually be measured. So Burke comes in, and they do walkthroughs through our classroom, and they measure the fidelity of which we're putting it in place. And so when he goes through and sees that 80% of the classrooms are showing powerful teaching and learning in the four areas, then he's out. And we just, like you said, it comes to teachers teaching teachers. So there's that data piece. We already did a benchmark in September, and then we have another benchmark in May. And I can already see we're making gains. When you walk into classrooms, there are teachers just rocking it with turn and discuss. The most beautiful thing is watching four- and five-year-olds in a kindergarten class, or five- and six-year-olds in a kindergarten class, when the teacher says, okay, we're going to do this math, you know, one plus one. Okay, talk to your partner, tell them, tell them what your answer is and how you got it. And just see the kids automatically turn and just start talking to each other and process, and then come right back. I mean, it's the most beautiful thing in the world. So, sorry, I just went off on a tangent there. But it's a really exciting thing, and, you know, if it catches on and other schools are able to do it, I think it's wonderful. I love the fact that Ledg teachers are so open to do it here, so.
Thank you.
If I may, I think what you're asking is, so obviously, we're building capacity within the district, and would Ledg Street be willing to share these practices or speak to them? And I would say probably yes.
Absolutely yes, yes.
Certainly, yeah.
Sorry, I think I misread that question. Answered it totally different from what you asked.
Thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Claffey, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Go ahead.
I said no thank you, did you hear that?
No, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I misheard you. Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. Johnson, you have a question?
Thank you. I know it's hard to understand sometimes between the phone and the microphone. Mr. Miller, my children went to Ledg Street, all three of them. And I thought it was a good experience for them. Ledg Street is a diverse school. It has a transient population back when my kids, and my oldest one is 39 now, so it's been quite a while. I was one of these parents that was in school all the time. They used to say, here, she comes again. But it was a big learning experience for me to make sure, you know, my children was educated. I quickly went through this whole proposal today. I picked up my packet today versus Friday, somehow I spaced it. And Burke, we've been using for how long?
I think we're going on, probably going on our third year, I think.
On the third year. And in Washington State, they saw big improvements with it?
Yeah, I used it in an elementary school that I worked in there. They had it in all of the Title I schools when I worked back in Washington.
Okay. And I kind of was going through their terminology here, which efforts to advance, they were talking about developing social-political consciousness and social-cultural responsiveness. And then, you know, they, they kind of got into grouping here, you know, for white teachers, administrators, this mirror has reflective realities that are painful, uncomfortable, and threatening, although ultimately transforming and liberating. What did they kind of, did they have the same terminology out of Washington?
So are you talking about the Ramapo?
Yeah, the Ramapo.
Ramapo, no, I didn't work with Ramapo. I worked with, sorry, I worked with Burke out in Washington. Ramapo is newer.
That's newer.
So, yeah, so what we're talking about with Ramapo is kind of deeper dives into who we are, and that hits just different, different strings and different people depending on where their journey is at and what they've been through in their lives. So as people reflect, it's just, it leaves it open to, you know, to whatever comes up there, it's important that people are able to process that and process that through, through conversation. So whatever it is that they feel they want to work on within the context of making themselves more available to students emotionally, to support them in their journeys throughout the school.
Okay, it's just a social-political, so I've kind of like, that kind of threw me off a little bit, because we don't, even with kids, we don't want politics in a classroom. I mean, that's the last we want.
Oh, yeah, no, it won't be. It definitely isn't surrounding around politics. It's more of guiding them through, for instance, if we have, if the goal is for us, and our most recent goal, for instance, with Ramapo, what we're going to be working on over the next few months, is setting up a youth voice program that will make sure that they have investment in our school improvement planning goals and investment in the data and investment in their learning and investment in moving the school forward with learning, we'll direct them in that way. So, you know, there might be other things that come up along with that, but we really want to focus it on, you know, how do they feel about our social-emotional learning goal in our school improvement plan? It's a goal that we're supposed to meet as a school, and they're the drivers of this thing. So it should be that they have input in, you know, how do they feel about that?
And with the Ramapo, do we, is this the first time we're using them?
No, we used them last year as well.
We used them last year, and we did references, we got references from other districts regarding this program and how it worked for them, and...
It actually came from, because I had looked out and I had looked kind of all around. I was going to use, there was an organization called Roots and Wings, I think it was called. We used it a couple of years ago, a few years ago, but they, they were no longer there when I wanted to do this, and they had, I guess, disbanded a bit. So that's when I asked Demonstrated Success, which is our state partner, our coaching partner, that we have.
Right. That's what I was going to add. So Demonstrated Success has a contract with New Hampshire, with the state of New Hampshire, and they were the ones who recommended this organization.
I did go through this, as you could tell, I wrote all over this already, you know, looking at questions, going online, trying to find references, you know? I don't care if we use them for a year or 10 years, I like to see what their references are and see what other districts have used them and what their, you know, if they've had them for three, four years, what has been their success rate? Because although these are ESA funds and Title II funds, they're still taxpayers' funds that come from the federal government.
So just to be clear, this is not, these are not ESA funds?
These are not ESA funds?
No, no, these are, yeah, they're, I'm, actually, I'm not sure exactly where this, I think they come from a couple of different places.
This was a, this one says it's CSI funds, right?
Yep, CSI funds, okay. I read the wrong line.
So essentially, that part that you're referencing really has to do with teachers being able to sort of see the world through the lens of students who are different from them. And I think it's really important for us as educators to make sure that we are culturally responsive and to make sure that we are understanding that there are children who come from different backgrounds than we come from. And I would also say that this is a field that is even in the principal evaluation rubric. So this is something that we, as a school district, would be looking for principals to part, to sort of bring to their schools so that we can be responsive to a diverse needs of stu, the diverse needs of our students.
I don't have a problem with that. I mean, my kids went to that school, I grew up in New York, so, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. I just don't like it when it's in a language and something, because I know we have HB544, I believe it is. And you have to be very careful with that, because if there's anything that looks like it could be misconstrued, then we don't want to have the stake coming down on us either.
Yep.
Yeah, I, yeah, and we've, I've had talks with them about that, so they're aware of that, and we've had talks. And that's why I think there needs to be, I think in any conversation where there are deep dives, you know, emotionally and into people and self-reflection, there just, there needs to be a really solid focus as to why we are talking about these things. And I think when you get that focus, like, again, our focus with Ramapo is looking into ourselves to try to see, you know, how can we show up better for our students? And then, you know, the youth voice is truly about our school improvement plan goals and data, and how can the kids be more involved and feel a sense of belonging by being more involved? So it's pretty highly focused so that we can, we can really navigate those conversations pretty tightly.
So while we have this program in Ledg Street, which is an inner-city school, so this is where I always come in and I say, how come one school is having different things like this? Why isn't several of our other inner-city schools having a program like this? Because they're in a city, they're very diversified, maybe not as much as Ledg Street, but we do have Amherst Street, Mount Pleasant, and Dr. Chris Schools.
Sure.
Which are, which are in more inner-city schools. So why aren't we having programs like this? Because this is where I find that if we want to talk about equality and equity, then we're losing it somewhere if we have only one inner-city school having this and not having the other inner-city school. And I always talk about this, that how come one school, how come, you know, Main Dunstable and Bicentennial scores are different and having different programs and sometimes on the inner-city schools? So this is where my concern lies, but, so I'm just throwing this out here, thank you.
Can I drop this maybe back to Dr. Sarfati? Is this something that's, to kind of take this program district-wide, as it's been a pilot at Ledg Street, in the professional development and plan that we just...
So I would say that no, there is no plan to take this district-wide. However, I think as Mr. Miller referenced, he, he interacted with one of these organizations in his previous experience. He found some great value in it and then decided to bring that to his school based on your individual school needs. Also, I guess, the one thing I would point out is, you know, certainly, the goals for our schools can be different depending on the needs of the students and the staff. And also, in terms of access to funding, it depends on the status of the school. There are lots of, just lots of factors that determine what the funding sources look like.
Thank you. Does that help clarify anything?
No.
No? Okay. So actually, it does sound like this is something that we should consider if we're seeing good results. And I guess, I think you're using some kind of trackable data to see how it is affecting the school environment through these last couple of years. And I do remember the Ramapo presentation from last year, and it does seem to be a good, a good program. I think that, yeah, I hope that if we're seeing success, then we can look at it and see if there's things that we can take throughout the district to apply in other classrooms, because, you know, I don't even think it has necessarily to do with students in the lower-income or Title I schools. I think there's probably pieces of this that we could take throughout to all elementary environments. If anyone has any other questions, we could take a motion. Do you have any other questions, Ms. Johnson?
No, but thank you. I just, I'm just going to give my comments. I just feel that I hear it's just one school, and I think if this is a good program, then the other schools are not going to be able to afford to have this. And it's always the funding, it's always the funding, it's a grant that we can get here. And so I guess the question then becomes, why don't we have probably one person that probably does the grants that can cover all the schools so we don't have this lack, especially in our inner-city schools? You know? So that's just my opinion, thank you.
On a side note, I actually agree with you. I think access to a full-time grant writer would benefit the district in spades. So that's, but that's a deal for another night.
I have just one more.
Oh, go ahead, yes.
So my question is more general. I was just wondering, how many of the schools in this district are eligible for the CSI funds, do you know?
So that I don't know off the top of my head.
Talking about qualification for the, what we call...
For the CSI funds, yeah.
For CSI, yeah. So we were identified, it was before I came there, it was the year before I came there, the test scores of, I think, 17, 18 were in the lowest 5% of the state, and that qualified. So it was like a month after I got here, I was told our school is a CSI school. And so I don't know their, I don't know about the exit criteria or when they're going to revisit that and select new schools, but I would assume that the general view is that we get this and do all of this, get this money and do all this so that we can eventually work ourselves to a point where we are, you know, humming right along at a higher level, so.
Thank you so much. At this time, I have a looking for a motion to approve contracts in the amounts of $21,000 for Ramapo and $22,000 for Burke to be funded by the CSI funds.
I'll make that motion.
All right. And, all right, so on the motion, Ms. Lamphier?
I'll make the motion to approve the contracts in the amounts of $21,000 for Ramapo and $22,000 for Burke to be funded by CSI funds.
And I'll second it. And, all right, Ms. Lamphier, how do you vote? Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes to move to the full board. All right. The next thing on the agenda is the Impact Coaching Partners. Oh, all right, thank you so much. I thought you were on the next one, too.
Hey, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Miller. Happy Valentine's Day.
If I may, can we possibly have Mr. Parker speak about his newsletter?
Yes, thank you so much for the reminder. Mr. Parker?
Thank you.
Oh, actually, I should ask, is the committee mind taking one of the line items out of order so that Mr. Parker can go first?
No.
All right. All right, go ahead, Mr. Parker.
Good evenings, nice to be here. Thank you for having me. So I wanted to speak to secondary newsletter. That is relatively new, came out, started in the spring, and it's called News From the Front, What's Happening Now in Secondary Schools. And create something that was different from what's already known. Like, for instance, Curriculum Chronicle is, you know, soup to nuts, you can find everything there, okay? It's wonderfully done every week. And we were taking soundings of people, you know, what would you like to hear, you know, read about? Information and stories. Even within the same building, sometimes you have one program that really doesn't know what the other program's all about or what they're doing, right? And so in News From the Front, you'll often find stories that are written by myself or stories that are written by teachers themselves describing their program, you know, with pictures and stories about what they do, the impact they're trying to have. And so you'll find stories about the middle schools, the high schools, and sometimes we lift people up, you know, unsung heroes, you know, to share what they're doing for kids and for their colleagues. And you'll find information about secondary curriculum as well, you know, for instance, the social studies competencies work that we've been doing at the middle schools. And when the steering committees get up and running again, that's another opportunity to mine and tell stories and help get momentum and give information about what are we doing in secondary moving forward, okay? What are the adults doing with kids and for kids, and what are kids doing with each other and families as well? So, and it's, you'll never find an issue more than two and a half pages, and I'm a big believer in that. And short and sweet, less is more. And, and when we can, teacher voice and appropriate student voice with pictures and links to other information. And so, and if you're interested in getting it, I'd be happy to send it to you. Comes out the last week of the month. So it's a monthly. And that's it.
Excellent. That sounds fantastic. I can't wait. And any questions?
No, no questions. I'm just, I'm happy, just reading these two pages, I learned more about the school than I knew for sure. So I would really like to get this email to me or whatever. I, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Mr. Claffey, do you have anything to add?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, Mr. Parker. You've, you've been doing a wonderful job since you came to the district and this is so refreshing. And thank you so much.
All right. Thank you so much for that presentation. Take care. Happy Valentine's Day. All right. So next thing, now we're on to Impact Coaching Partners.
All right. Here we go. I'm going to pull my mask down. Okay. So Impact Coaching Partners, we're really excited about this partnership. One of the things that we wanted to be able to do is we wanted to start a new teacher PD series. We have a lot of teachers who just finished school, some of our new teachers. And when you're in school, you learn a lot about theory. You do have the opportunity to do some student teaching, but you can't really set up systems and routines in a classroom that's not your own. So what we are doing is really teaching new teachers how to set up their classrooms for success. So part of, part of this professional development has to do with our February 21st PD Day, and that is PD for the entire district. Teachers can sign up for any one of our numerous offerings. It is Teacher Choice Day. And so we're offering three different workshops from Impact Coaching Partners. What we're also doing is through the summer, we're offering this series. And some of the areas that we're highlighting in the professional development series have to do with systems and routines, directions and expectations, kind of what that looks like, academic ratio, motivation, and then certainly formative assessment and how we can use formative assessment to drive instruction. Also, in our partnership with Impact Coaching Partners, we are offering some coaching foundations courses to our peer coaches. So our peer coaches are some of the most valuable members of our, of our teaching staff for sure. What I'll also say is, you know, they do a great job, even though we haven't really prepared them adequately, I think, for the position. I, I don't know that they've received any sort of professional development around what is it, what does it mean to be a coach? And even with that, they're doing a fantastic job. So we are going to offer them some very targeted professional development so that they can be even more effective in their jobs.
Excellent. I'm, I'm really glad to hear that. I know that we worked really hard in getting our professional development plan put together efficiently and also making sure it's targeted to teacher needs and student needs in the district. So kudos to you for that. And I'm glad that you're so far having pretty decent responses from the community. People excited to take those things. Does anyone from the committee have a question?
I do. I know that the teachers are feeling overwhelmed and everything from what we hear in the meetings. And I know how they're reacting to these opportunities for professional development. Are they excited about it or are they all like, oh, no, more, more things to do?
So a couple of things. So all of the professional development is voluntary. So they, it's all optional, I should say. So they choose to sign up. So we have, I think, a little over 1,000 certified teachers in the district right now. I will tell you that with many of these offerings, we max out. So we set a certain number of participants. We do pay teachers for any PD that occurs after school. We pay them $35, $35 an hour for most of the professional development opportunities. A couple of them are 25, but for the, a general rule is $35 per hour. And yeah, I mean, for the most part, they're pretty maxed out, even with, even, even though we're not hosting committees right now.
That's great. Thanks.
Yep. Mr. Claffey?
No, I was just, the website looks, looks like they're, they got good reviews. They have a partnership with the Merrimack Wise. I'm not familiar with that, but it's fine with me.
All right. Thank you. All right. I, let's see here. So, hold on, let me pull up the motion. All right. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the contract with Impact Coaching Partners in the amount of $31,400 to be paid for with ESRTU and Title II funding.
I'll make that motion. So I.
If you want.
Oh, okay. So moved. Thank you.
But you can say it. It's all good. All right. So Ms. Lamphier is on the motion and I will second it. And so, Ms. Lamphier, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown votes yes. The motion passes unanimously. All right. So our next item on the agenda is the Achievement Network.
Yep. So Achievement Network is a partnership that we made earlier in the year. One of the, sort of, one of the, not complaints, but one of the considerations that teachers have asked us to make during their, our public comment is that when we roll out a new initiative, we need to adequately train them. And ANET certainly is a new initiative. It's a, it's an assessment that we administer for our K-2 students to gauge where they are in their math performance. And we can really use the data to drive instruction. ANET also has an abundance of professional development that is extremely valuable. However, just based on COVID and the, and the time that we kind of rolled this out, we didn't really prepare teachers. So we heard them. And what we're doing right now is we are offering a virtual PD series. Those, the, we, we did like a pilot workshop a couple, last week, I believe. And that was well-attended and also the feedback from that was really positive. So some of the things that we're focusing on is helping our students engage in high-quality math tasks. And then also, we're going to help our teachers work on just different aspects of rigor. The Common Core identifies three different aspects of rigor. What does that mean? How can we bring that into our classrooms? And then also having some concrete visuals and then just some other key points that will help our students to be successful.
All right. Excellent. I'm glad to have this extra help for practical math experience. Is there, are there any questions from the committee?
No, thank you.
All right. Mr. Claffey?
No, I see that it's a nonprofit. That's great.
Yes. Excellent. And Ms. Johnson? No? Nothing at this time? All right. Yeah, I think this is really good. I'm glad we're following up with those kind of opportunities to help the teachers, you know, modify their classrooms. And this is great. Thank you. All right. So I am looking for a motion to approve the contract with Achievement Network in the amount of $14,500 to be paid for with ESRTU funding.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Lamphier. I will second the motion. Ms. Lamphier, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
I also vote yes. The motion passes unanimously.
So one thing I just wanted to add was that Meg Dupret, who is our elementary math peer coach, was, is instrumental in bringing ANET to the district and really helping us to provide PD. So I just want to give a shout out to Meg. All right. So the next one has to do with Jessica Minahan. And I will tell you that this professional development is probably the, the most well-received. We did have one session with Jessica Minahan and I want to say 91 people signed up for that professional development and that started at 3:45. So it was after school. People really want to know how they can, how they can help to support their students who are displaying, you know, some of the more undesirable or challenging behaviors. They want to find out what's causing the behavior and what can they do? Because I think people are certainly at a loss. And so one of the things that we want to do is we want to have a professional development series. So just to speak to something that we talked about earlier tonight, it's really important for us to be able to have professional development that is sustainable, professional development that supports teachers on an ongoing basis so that they're not just attending a workshop and then, you know, that's it. There's no sort of follow-up. We want to be really consistent about the follow-up. One of the things that it's important to note about our grant funds, especially when it comes to our Title II and our Title IV funds, is that unfortunately, a significant amount of those funds is taken up by salaries. I don't know if you realize that. So we have limited, we have limited Title II and Title IV funds that we can actually use for professional development, for technology and innovation, for Title IV, or to flex money from Title IV over to Title II so that we can have more professional development. So we have to be very, very strategic in the professional development that we do offer. And that's why we go to schools and we ask them, what is it that you need for your building so that your teachers can be successful and so that your students can do well? And certainly overwhelmingly, teachers wanted to find out about behaviors. How can I learn about them? What can I do to support my students? And then I would just say, kind of as an aside, the other area that teachers have asked a lot about is professional development around dyslexia. I think they're seeing, they're, they're seeing sort of evidence of dyslexia in their classrooms and they want to know more about that. So as teachers, we don't, unless we're reading specialists, we don't really learn about these things. I mean, even when it comes to managing challenging behaviors, I have an undergrad in psychology, but I didn't really learn about how do I get to the root of a child's behavior and what can I do to support that child? And so these types of workshops, I think, are really helpful to teachers because they're meaningful and then they can apply these strategies in class. I probably had about maybe 10 to 12 teachers email me after the Jessica Minahan presentation to say that she was one of the best presenters they've seen in a long time. So.
Well, that is certainly excellent to hear. And I think kind of transitionally, what you were talking about is since we're finally seeing some success with some good programming continuing and kind of back to what Mr. Miller was talking about earlier, creating common goals, common language, and common things throughout the district. And then the next step, training the teachers appropriately for the types of things we're implementing. And then moving on to the next step to make sure those teachers are good coaches to go foster that. And then creating these strong professional learning committees or communities that are, I think it's good, and it's also good to create the buzz when you have someone who's as good as Jessica Minahan to come in and teachers get excited about that and want to come back again. And to follow up with meeting teacher and student need when you're seeing maybe a higher development of, or more students with dyslexia and similar reading issues. So I'm really glad that this is like an arching plan to move forward to make all the teachers stronger, all the students stronger, and the district as a whole stronger. So thank you for driving that. Does anyone from the committee have a question?
I do. I'm sorry. I have so many questions. So I just saw that there's all these dates for February and March, April, February, March, and July and stuff. I don't know, are these different sessions? Is it ongoing or is it the same session over and over for different groups of teachers?
Yeah. So they are, some of the sessions are duplicate sessions and some of them are, some of the topics are different topics. So I specifically wanted to take three different topics and I wanted to duplicate the sessions because we have other professional development opportunities going on. And so I wanted to make sure that teachers had an opportunity to attend.
Okay. And it says that the, the max number of attendees will be 300. Is that 300 per session?
300 per session.
Oh, wow. That's great. So lots of teachers can get this, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And one thing I do want to say is, like I said, the first session, 91 teachers participated. And what certainly will happen is that teachers will talk to their colleagues and say, hey, that actually was a good one. You, you're going to want to attend that one. And that's sort of how it happens, word of mouth.
Mr. Claffey? Do you have anything?
No, thank you.
All right. So I am looking for a motion to approve the contract with Jessica Minahan in the amount of $12,600 to be paid for with the Title II funds.
So moved.
All right. Ms. Lamphier? And I will second the motion. So on the motion, Ms. Lamphier, how do you vote? Oh. How do you vote?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown votes yes. Motion passes. All right. At 6:49. Next item is updates from the Curriculum Chronicle and so on.
Yeah. So I'll just talk about this really quickly. So essentially, the Curriculum Chronicle is distributed to teachers every Monday and it includes all of the professional learning opportunities for teachers. It, it's supposed to be kind of one-stop shopping where we have links, we, teachers can sign up, they can get their, their documentation so that they could submit for reimbursement for the hours that they put in after school. And one of the things that I just want to highlight that's really exciting is Justice Broderick is a former, a former judge, and he is somebody who's pretty notable in the state of New Hampshire. I don't know if you all have had a chance to hear him speak, but his story is incredibly compelling. He had a son who battled mental illness and unfortunately, you know, like many parents do, I, I think he didn't necessarily recognize the severity of his son's mental illness and unfortunately, some catastrophic events unfolded. So Justice Broderick is, he is, he's actually funded by a local organization. So when he comes to our school and he presents, it doesn't cost us any money and he's just very happy to kind of spread mental health sort of awareness to folks all around the state. But one of the things that he's really committed to is making sure that we recognize mental illness, recognize depression in our youngsters because he wants to prevent families from experiencing some of the, the trauma that his family experienced. So he teamed up with a local author. And just, I have her book here. Her name is Irene Bouchine. And together, they are going to present to our teachers, to our administrative staff, and then also to the community at large. And that's going to happen on March 15th at 6:30 PM. There'll be more information that goes out to the public. This will be a virtual presentation. And essentially Irene will read her children's book, which has to do, it's called Cecilia and the Little Boy. And it has to do with a child who's basically living in the darkness. And that darkness, of course, is depression. And then, you know, just talks about like, how do you recognize that darkness? How do you recognize depression? And then how can you help, how can you talk to children about what they're feeling? And then how can you help them? And so we're really excited and honored that we have Justice Broderick and Irene Bouchine participating in this. And yeah, just really happy to have them join us. So just everybody look out for that.
Oh, thank you. I'm really excited to take a look at this book. I think this is going to be a really great thing, a great experience for the teachers and the district. And I'm excited that the families of the city can have the opportunity to tune in as well. I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
It's great. And just so everybody knows, that will be delivered in a webinar format. So individuals will be able to use the Q and A features. And then at the end of the presentation, we'll open it up for, for comments or questions. So that's exciting. Yeah. So just some of the other things that we, that we have featured in this, the Curriculum Chronicle have to do, again, with professional development. But one of the things I do want to highlight is our, our mindset workshops. So we offered two six-week mindset workshops for teachers so that they can learn a little bit more about self-care and what does that really mean? I know that that's a buzz term right now in education. But I will tell you that both of these sessions were maxed out. And so based on feedback from those who participated, they want to have some sort of follow-up care. And they also want or expressed, you know, interest and, or people have expressed interest in us offering a second set of six-week courses. So we're going to do that. And that's something I'm really excited about because I think when teachers first signed up, you know, some of them weren't really sure what to expect. But then once they were able to log into the workshops and they realized it was a safe place, there are no administrators who are participating on purpose so that people people can feel like they can, you know, speak honestly. I think it was really therapeutic for them. And a couple of times, folks had some trouble signing into Zooms, and they were like sending me email after email, I need to get in, I need to get in, I'm missing my session. So that's kind of exciting that they found those sessions to be valuable.
What great feedback. Doesn't get any better than that. Excellent. Thank you. Any questions?
I was just interested in learning more about that workshop. I didn't know if that was in the paperwork you've given us last session.
Yeah, so you know what I can do? I can make sure that I send that to you. Kelly Lynn Coaching, she's, she's really, she's really phenomenal, I will say. So we had her, we kind of, I kind of wanted to find out what she was all about and what her sessions, sessions were like. So I had her come to district office, and she did a session with the principals and me, with the elementary principals and me. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not the most, I don't know how to even word it, but some of those practices seem like things that I wouldn't be interested, but I will tell you that we went through some exercises that were just amazing. And some of my colleagues revealed things about themselves that were really profound, and I think the experience really helped us to connect on a totally different level. And as somebody who's only been in the district since July, I really appreciated that because I got to know, you know, I can just see you kind of on the surface, but when I really get into who you are as a human and what you're going through, it just, it just puts things into perspective, so.
That's what I've always learned, is like connecting to people on a, on a deeper level makes for a better working environment.
Yeah.
I, how do you, how is this paid for, this particular program?
Yeah, so these are, so the Kelly Lynn Coaching is paid through Title II funds.
Yep. Thank you. Any thing to add, Mr. Claffey?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I actually want to give a shout out to the people featured, People for the Planet Group, featured in the News From the Front. I know a few of those young ladies, so great job, girls. Keep it up. So is there anything else?
Nope, that's it. So the, the next thing, it's just sort of included in the Curriculum Chronicle, too, is just the professional development catalog. And I don't know if you all had a chance to see what all of the opportunities are, especially those on February 21st. But what we did was, we, based on feedback from some members of the union, we moved all of the, the sessions to virtual offerings, and it's, it's kind of great because teachers have a little bit more flexibility, and they're able to, they don't have to worry about getting from one place to another. They'll be in their home schools, and they'll be able to log into the sessions that most meet their needs. And I will say that we have, we use a program called Frontline, and that's where we track professional development. Teachers sign up, and then they complete evaluations after they are finished with the professional development. And I will tell you that these sessions have a number of participants who have signed up. The great thing about this Professional Development Day is that we have a lot of in-house presenters as well, some experts who are able to kind of share what they know, like Meg Duprat is offering amazing math professional development, Sharon Saunders, Elevation Training. Elevation is a program that we use for our English learners. There's lots of good stuff happening, so we're really excited about that.
Excellent. I'm glad that we're putting such an effort into making sure we have quality PD. Great. Okay, so at this time, I think I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, thank you. And I will second the motion. On the motion, Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
And Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are adjourned at 6:57. Thank you so much.